On the back and forth with the candidates. If you have questions, feel free to type it to the chat. That'll come to myself, Paul Shanafelt, Lena's executive director, Charlie Ryback, who I'll introduce in a minute, who's going to be our moderator. We'll be posting links and resources in the chat as warranted. I'll also note that we're live streaming this on our Facebook page. So Paul will put a link to the Facebook livestream in the chat. So for you all to view. And we're also going to be recording this. So those who of our neighbors who are unable to join us tonight, will be able to watch after the fact. So we have a format tonight. We have two-minute opening statements from each of the candidates. We're going to go to a series of five questions. Thank you to all of you who have registered online and submitted your questions. We selected a representative sample of questions that were submitted from our neighbors and we'll use those to help guide tonight's discussion. Really quick order of speaking. We're going to start with Aisha Chukti and go alphabetically from there. And then we'll be reversing order alphabetically to answer questions. Give each and everyone the equal time. I was asked by our friends at Fairboat Minnesota to remind everyone. And for those who are long-time voters in Minneapolis, you are familiar with our ranked choice, ranked choice voting ballot. For those who are new to Minneapolis or new to voting under ranked choice, under ranked choice voting, you're going to rank your candidates in order of your preference, first choice, second choice, third choice, instead of choosing just one. So in a single seat race like this, if no candidate receives a majority of first choices, least popular candidate is defeated and those votes are reassigned to remaining candidates based on those second choices. And so that continues until one candidate receives a majority of 50 plus one. So we're excited about ranked choice voting and encourage everyone to be considering sort of their first, second and third choices and so on as this goes on. Finally, before I turn it over to Charlie to kind of get into the meat of it, I'll just note that Lena is proud to partner with all the other neighborhood associations in Ward 10. And we're planning and welcome the opportunity to host additional forums as the campaign season progresses. So DFL caucuses, I think, are going to start around April 1st. And you can go to caucus.dfl.org to learn more about DFL caucuses for those who will be interested in that process. But we look forward to having a series of these throughout the year. So with that, thank you all for joining us. Thank you for our candidates. Thank you all the neighbors. And I'd like to introduce Charlie Ryback, who's going to be our moderator, to talk a little bit about southwest Minneapolis news and then kick off our conversation. So thanks again, Charlie, turn it over to you.
All right, thanks a bunch, Kevin. Very excited to be here. As Kevin mentioned, I am working on a project that is, for the time being, called Southwest Minneapolis News. We're working to fill in the news and information gap that's left behind by the absence of the Southwest Journal. We're working with a great group of folks, including Paul, on pulling together what that's going to look like. Right now, we're trying to just hear from as many people as possible. I will share our survey in the chat. If folks want to fill that out, that'd be great to hear from you as we continue on with building this. So thank you so much for having me. And I'm actually going to be a Ward 10 resident in about a month. So very excited to be here on a bunch of different levels. With that, I think we can, well, before we launch an opening statements, I would just want to take people through the ding rules. There will be two types of dings that you will hear. Each candidate will get two minutes to answer the question. The first ding will appear with 30 seconds left in your time. The second ding will be a double ding and that will mean your time is up. Please respect the double ding. With that, I think we should get started with opening statements. Aisha, why don't you lead things off?
All right, hi, everyone. My name is Aisha Chukti. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a community organizer, union activist, first-generation immigrant and Muslim American. I'm running because Ward 10 needs a representative who will ensure the voices of those most impacted by decisions are prioritized in decision-making. I'm dedicated to fighting shoulder-to-shoulder with all of you for equity and justice for all Minneapolis residents. My story is the story of so many people in our community. I know what it's like to struggle to find affordable housing, to be a child helping your immigrant parents navigate the world, to have to choose between buying groceries and making a student loan payment. I first moved to this community because it was affordable, but I've stayed because I was welcomed with open arms. As the political organizer for the Service Employees International Union, I stand with working people every day. Their fight, the daily struggle of trying to make ends meet, is one I've known my entire life. I've been working since I was young in retail and in childcare. I've spent most of my career working to elect progressive leaders to public office. I served as the campaign manager for Congresswoman Ilhan Omar and have worked for progressive champions like State Senator Aaron Murphy and Senator Bernie Sanders. While working at Take Action Minnesota, a grassroots nonprofit, I led our effort to elect progressive leaders to local office across the state. In 2019, I was entered into the DFL Women's Hall of Fame as a rising star. I've also served as vice chair to the 5th Congressional District DFL and helped found the Muslim Caucus of the Young Democrats of America. For all my time in political work, the most meaningful things I've accomplished have been grassroots and in community. Last summer, I helped lead my neighbors in coming together to keep one another safe when white nationalists were threatening us and we couldn't rely on emergency services. That spirit of solidarity and mutual aid is what I love so much about living here. I love this city and I love our ward. Thank you for having me with you today and I look forward to the opportunity to earn your support.
All right, thanks so much. Next, we will go to Stephen.
It's Charlie. And thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it and I'm looking forward to introducing myself to all of y'all. So my name is Stephen Fritsch. I'm running in Ward 10 as a democratic socialist. I'm a queer man. I use he/him pronouns. I was born and raised in Stacy, Minnesota, if you know where that is. But I've spent most of my adult life in the Twin Cities. In 2018, I started my career in mass transit. And with that, I went down to Jacksonville, Florida and got involved in some grassroots organizations doing anti-war protests and feeding unhoused people. Right now, I live actually in the wedge with my partner Lisa and our dog, Honey. And when I moved back to Minnesota after living down in Jacksonville, Florida, you know, I got involved with local political organizations, especially over the summer, you know, fundraising and getting supplies for local distribution centers and helping out with the organization Save the Boards to memorialize the movement that is preserving the plywood protest art that was created throughout the summer and fall. I'm running to pass specific policies that are going to help poor and working-class people in the neighborhood and in Ward 10 and throughout the city. I support free or no fair public transportation as well as expanding transit services to underserved communities, rapid transit lines and free bike rentals. To support ending cash bail, a $25 minimum wage immediately because rent is getting out of control in the city and the people really need to survive. I support free school lunches for all public school students, K through 12, and of course, a 3% cap on annual rent increases. I also support police accountability through civilian police accountability council. I just wanted to thank you all for letting me in your space tonight and giving me a shot to talk about myself. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Next, we will go to Alicia. You are on mute.
There we go. Now I'm live. Hello, everybody. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here. So coming from Oklahoma, raised in part by my Japanese grandmother and seeing how she and my mother really struggled without a community in a place that has a difficult time accepting difference, I knew from the beginning that I wanted to learn how we transition from a world organized around oppression to a world organized around care. This is why I went to school and studied abroad in South Africa to learn about the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, studied environmental and federal Indian law in law school, went back to school to teach students how to think critically about race, gender and economic exploitation. And while there, was part of a leadership group organizing to get recognition for a graduate student union. So I later, I opened a small business in a struggling neighborhood and started a small business association and was a champion for Planned Parenthood in a place where reproductive rights really hang on by a thread. And it's why in the, you know, most recently, I've been learning about and training in restorative justice as well as really working to strengthen democracy at the grassroots level through my neighborhood association. So as I look at the multiple crises that are facing Ward 10, what I see is that right away, we need to stabilize our small business sector of our community. We also need to implement a series of policies around restorative justice, around housing justice and environmental justice. I have very specific ideas around each one of these things that I'm looking forward to collaborating with you around over the course of the next year. So I know that we are capable of moving from crisis to opportunity by doing this work together. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Katie, you're up next.
Hey, yeah, thank you, everyone, for being here today as well as to Lena Board for this opportunity. My name is Katie Jones. I'm a small-town Hoosier by birth and a Minneapolis resident by choice. When I moved here, my neighbors welcomed me and they opened doors for me. And I want everyone who lives here to feel that way too, to know that they belong and that this community has their back. I'm an engineer and a community builder. In my professional and volunteer work, I solve big problems by pulling together stakeholders to fix broken systems. On the city council, I will tackle our city's challenges the same way I have co-created Community Change for years. I'm running for city council because I want to work with you to build a Minneapolis that is more just, connected and sustainable. This list starts with justice for a reason. COVID and the murder of George Floyd by the MPD lay bare the injustices that have been embedded in our city through decades of overt and structural racism. Amidst the pain and fear, we must resist the urge to retreat from community and instead work together to right these historical wrongs. Ajust Minneapolis ensures stable housing for all. Invest in violence prevention and allocates resources to appropriate public safety responders. Many Apolitans should be able to trust that responders will provide support and not cause harm. In a connected Minneapolis, we can each access what we need via 15-minute bike, walk or transit ride. In this Minneapolis, sidewalks are navigable for all neighbors in all seasons. On the city's infrastructure committee, I fought for a more connected Minneapolis with increased sidewalk coverage and safe street design. A sustainable Minneapolis thrives while minimizing environmental impacts. Invest in green job creation through worker training and business resources. It incentivizes sustainable design and new development. I've brought solar to homes in our community and organics recycling options to renters. I'll continue to fight for a more just, connected and sustainable Minneapolis. No matter how divided we feel, it is possible to realize our shared vision. It will take each of your voices and it will take a leader who can invite you to the table and facilitate solutions-oriented dialogue. As an engineer and a community organizer, convening and problem-solving is what I do. When I moved here, you opened doors for me and now I'm running for this seat to open the doors of City Hall for you.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to Chris.
Hey, everybody, Chris Parsons here. I want to thank the Lena Board for putting this on and allowing us to get our message out in front of the voters. My name is Chris Parsons. I'm a resident of South Uptown. And I've been a resident in Minneapolis for most of my life. I grew up in Minneapolis, attending Minneapolis Public Schools. I played sports in Minneapolis Parks. And I have two daughters. And I'm running because I want to bring collaboration, advocacy and Ward 10 values to the city council. I'm a 20-year firefighter, serving the St. Paul Fire Department as a captain. 15 of those years, I have been a advocate for firefighters. Eight of those years, serving as a chair officer with my home local, Local 21. And the last seven years as president of the Minnesota Professional Firefighter State Association, representing 2,000 firefighters from all over the state. I'm running to be an advocate for Ward 10. I believe that my mixture of professional and personal experiences positions me to bring our values down to City Hall to get things done for our residents and for our small businesses. We have a lot of challenges right now. I moved to Ward 10 because it's because of its vibrancy. It's a mix of businesses. Growing up in Minneapolis, you know, Uptown, like Prince said, is the place you want to be. And it's the place that I've chosen to make my home. But that has been under attack. It's been under attack from job losses and business losses due to the pandemic and also from the rise in crime. We need to get a handle on both of those issues. We can have public safety and police accountability and a change in police culture, but we don't have to sacrifice our public safety to make that happen. So I'm for properly staffing the Minneapolis Police Department so that we can handle the rise in crime. We also have an affordable housing crisis. We have the certain policies going on in the city where we're taking away ownership opportunities from our...
Chris, your two minutes is up. I'm sorry, we have to move on.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear the ding.
Sorry. David, next.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is David Wheeler and I'm really delighted to be with you tonight. I think these forums are a great opportunity to get introduced to the candidates and for us to talk about what some of the real priorities are for our city. People at my age and stage usually say, you know, I've probably done enough. I think I'll step aside. Well, with what happened this past year, I made the decision to step forward, not aside. And the reason I decided to step forward is I think we're in a crisis mode right now, a significant one. Financially, we're in a tough situation. We've got some pretty responsible people in City Hall making some decisions in terms of the staff and our budget. But it is a bit of a crisis because we're down so many tens of millions of dollars in our tax revenues. The city council did not behave well this past year. And they sort of all attacked each other and ran around in different directions. They went after Rondo, our police chief, who's really a very capable person. And those were things that made me decide to step forward. We have some financial difficulties we have to face. We have to rebuild Lake Street for all those minority businesses that were destroyed this past summer. We need to transform the police department. It does mean that we're going to have to have more officers. We're going to have to have good training. We're going to have to have moved some of those people out of there that should not be there. Please don't put your fingers like that. I think that's really very rude. You're supposed to be listening and not demonstrating at this point. I also think we have to work really hard and I want to be sure I hear the bell at Justin Case. I need to, we need to work on racial equity. My husband, Edward Summers, and I and Labrador Retriever live here in East Harriet. I first visited the Twin Cities back in the late 50s, early 60s when they dug the trench to put in the freeway. I've been living here, I've been a 25-year member at the Wedge Co-op and really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Yes, we'll listen to the community. Come talk to us, come talk to us, but don't do this, please, please. I think that's very rude.
Your time's up, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Ding system isn't working, so I'm just going to verbally say 30 seconds and then I will say again, your time's up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We will now move on to questions. We're going to go in reverse order, so we'll start with David. David, we're in the midst of a housing crisis in our city. How would you approach the issue of housing instability and homelessness as a council member?
Well, we are in a crisis. There's no question about it. Interesting article that just came out tonight is that there actually is going to be some more housing that will be available, but they say that doesn't mean the prices will go down and they really should. I think we have to have affordable housing. Any new developments got to, must have some low-income component built into it. I think with so many people out on the street and homeless, it's, we have to, the shelters are important, but that's not a solution. We had a lot of SROs other places in Duluth where I was and there are not many SROs left. So we need to address this problem and it's got to come from a lot of different standpoints. We need to engage nonprofits, we need to engage faith communities, we need to engage the county and we all have to work together on this. And I think that's an important piece. It isn't going to be simple, it's going to be multifaceted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, we will go to you next.
Yeah, so first off, I guess it's a two-part question. So on the homelessness issue, we need to partner with our various levels of government, city, county, state and federal governments to address the needs in our homelessness crisis. We're seeing a rise in homelessness due to the pandemic. So as we, as conditions improve, I hope and expect that the number of homeless people that are on our streets, that that situation will improve. In my work as a fire captain with the St. Paul Fire Department, I respond to the homeless encampments in the area and I see that the conditions that they're living in, many of them are dealing with mental health issues as well as addiction issues. We need to put more resources into mental health and addiction to get these people into supportive housing. On the affordability issue, we, as a city, we need to end the policy of getting rid of single-family homes. It's hurting families. It's hurting people that want to increase their wealth, increase their, or get into ownership opportunities. We, right now, we have housing where we're prioritizing renting and the new housing that we're building after we're harvesting our single-family homes is not affordable. So we need to, we need to give people more opportunities to afford homes. And we also need to, as we enjoy more prosperity after this pandemic, we need to look at making the city more livable and bringing about a more livable wage. Right now, the minimum wage is too low. We need a more livable wage.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we move on, just a quick request. Got in a couple of comments, just would like to ask everybody to please be as respectful as possible. Doing this over Zoom is very difficult and creates lots of interesting challenges. So please be respectful and, you know, let's make sure that everybody can get their fair chance to answer their questions in the way they need to. Katie, you're up next. Take it away.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And I first, I just want to say that, you know, I've had rental situations where the rent went up and I had to leave because I could no longer afford rent. And so, you know, we need housing solutions for everyone at different price points and for people at different stages of their lives. We need housing today, we need housing tomorrow, we need housing in the future. Housing today means investing in resources for those who are unhoused and investing in new solutions like the Innovative Indoor Villages Project, which addresses barriers to, for those who are unhoused that haven't been addressed with typical shelter systems. We need housing tomorrow to make sure that people who are on the verge of homelessness don't sink into homelessness. I'm supportive of programs such as the Stable Homes, Stable Schools program, which as the owner of a triplex, we participated in and had a family that was at risk of losing their home in the subsidized program so that they could, their son could stay in the local school. I'm also in favor of the 4D tax credit, which keeps naturally affordable housing affordable as well as considering rent stabilization options that could make sure that our housing and rental prices in particular stay affordable. And last but not least, we need housing in the future. We need to make sure that we allow for new housing to be developed. We've had 50,000 new people move to Minneapolis in the last 10 years and I can only imagine that that's going to continue. We need to continue to allow for new housing to be developed and that's different kinds, from ADUs and people's backyards to new duplexes and triplexes, which allow for people to become more stable in their housing by allowing diversified income. And then also allowing for new things like senior housing towers that allow for people who want to stay in their neighborhood to move in and move to those places and stay in their neighborhood.
Thank you so much. Alicia, you are up next.
So housing instability, let me talk about this one first. You know, this is something that is not just a moral imperative that I think many of us feel. This is something that I have actually experienced in my life. You know, as a child, we lived in apartments. We lived in, had a trailer that was repossessed. We've had a home foreclosed. You know, housing instability is something that I know in my bones because I grew up with it. And so I understand that this is a very important topic that we address, especially as we are emerging from pandemic and a lot of people are going to be, you know, potentially displaced. I think that the programs, I think Katie did a great job of listing out some of the existing programs that I really support and that we need to make sure stay front and center. I think that we can do a better job using our current housing stock because new build is at least twice as expensive as what already exists. So there are several ways that we can use current stock to kind of put a lot more housing online quickly. And this would be the SROs that David mentioned, which is single-room occupancy. So these are kind of like large apartment or large hotels or other large buildings that are transitioned. Was that 30 seconds? And then you have boarding houses, auxiliary housing. The homelessness is probably the most difficult issue and that's something that we really need to work with our county and our federal partners around. And we can talk more about this when we have more time as well.
Thank you so much. Stephen, why don't you take it away next?
Yeah, so as everyone knows, most of Ward 10 rents. So we need to put laws in place that limit the annual increase of rents to 3%. We need to push for a citywide income-based rent. So people aren't paying more than 50% of their income towards their rent. We need to create community land trusts so housing is more affordable for people who do want to become homeowners. But I also think utilizing new construction apartment complexes by having 20% of the units be income-based is a good way to transition into that. And it will definitely help out our unhoused neighbors and those facing housing precarity. We also need the new apartment complexes to definitely have smart commercial spaces so we're not stuck with food deserts. A good thing for us all to remember is, you know, we're all one or two pages away from being houseless ourselves. So I think we need to stand in solidarity with our unhoused neighbors.
Thank you so much. Aisha, take it away.
Yeah, I believe that housing is a human right. As a renter and a person who's experienced housing insecurity my entire life, I know what it's like to fear being priced out of the community you love. Our approach to housing should be to increase new affordable housing options and preserve existing ones while limiting displacement. We need to make sure there's enough affordable housing for the people who choose to make this community their home and for the people who've called Minneapolis home for a long time. We need as many tools in our toolbox to address affordability, including tenant protections. That looks like pursuing a charter amendment to establish municipal rent control in Minneapolis, passing measures that protect tenants from evictions and making it easier for tenants to pull their money together to purchase the building they're living in. We also need to invest in the expansion of public housing and stopping the privatization of the existing public housing units and loosening municipal restrictions to better allow for creative housing solutions like cooperative living and affordable micro-units. We have to invest in social housing programs like cooperatives and public housing. Social housing does not need to be subpar housing and it's an important tool in addressing our current housing crisis. It will increase the total available affordable housing units in the near term while we wait for naturally occurring affordable housing over the long term. You know, when it comes to the question on homelessness, like we have to immediately stop using city resources from being used to evict and remove encampments. We need to fund hotel rooms and permanent housing at a level that meets the need of housing insecurity in our city and provide comprehensive public health response to encampments. Our vision for housing must be long-term and it has to recognize that housing is a human right and not a commodity.
Thank you so much. So that I stop interrupting you guys, I'm now going to hold up a piece of paper with 30 on it when there are 30 seconds remaining. So sorry about that. Trying to find a good system here over Zoom. All right, for our next question, I'll kick things off. Five of our ward's major corridors, Hennepin, Bryant, Nicollet, Franklin and Lyndale are slated for major changes. What is your vision for these corridors and for transportation through Ward 10 in general? Aisha, why don't you take it away?
Yeah, everyone in Minneapolis should be able to safely, affordably and effectively move through the city on foot, bike, public transit or by car. Our systems were designed in part to perpetuate segregation and injustice. Highways destroyed black neighborhoods and bus routes were planned to benefit white residents. But it doesn't have to be that way, and especially when we're looking at the development of future corridors, carefully and equitably designed streets and transit systems can be a tool to repair harm, to make our city more equal, more accessible, and more sustainable. We have to ensure that our complete streets plan is implemented equally in low wealth communities across our ward and the city. That means prioritizing pedestrians, cyclists, and transit riders. I will work with county partners to assure that transit is more affordable and accessible in every corner of our city. We need to implement policies that prevent the over enforcement of street sweeping and snow plowing violations in low wealth communities. I'm also dedicated to working with the Met Council to advocate for the inclusion of phone charging docks and warming stations in more transit stops, including covered bus stops.
Thanks so much. Next up, we've got Stephen.
Yes, so I love mass transit. I'm a big fan, and I think it's super important for helping the environment. You know, we need to take big changes for the environment. You know, we've seen with the polar vortex and just over the last few years, wildfires and all the crazy environmental repercussions of our actions. So, you know, we need to move towards electric vehicles. We need to expand our routes and increase the number of buses out there just to underserved communities as well as no fair policies. But on top of all that, I would love to see a bus lane all the way up and down Lake Street. And also to incorporate, you know, smart infrastructure with DSRC signals connected to these city buses, you know, with their onboard units so that they have priority and that they're able to extend green lights to be more efficient. I'm a big fan of free bike rentals because, you know, when I was moving back up to Minnesota, I had to sell my bike. So now I'm out a bike and it would be really helpful for, you know, people who, you know, either can't drive or don't have a license to, you know, be able to take a bike to get to for that first and last mile transit. Need, sorry. Thank you. I'm good.
Thanks so much. Alicia.
Yeah, so our transit corridors, as you mentioned, all of these different roads, these are also really our business nodes and our business corridors. And my answer to this question might have been a little bit different pre pandemic, but right now, looking at the real crisis that our small businesses are facing, I want to make sure that whatever we are deciding on these transit quarters, we make sure that we are bringing in our small business partners, especially our immigrant, black businesses. We actually have a very diverse small business group, multiple different communities across all of these streets. And so that would be the number one. So I want to make sure that we are bringing those partners in. I think that as far as it goes with transit, the moves that we've been that we have been doing to make sure that that our streets are accessible to pedestrians, to cyclists, to buses, and to cars that really have a multimodal, you know, thinking is exactly what we should be doing. I'm excited about the rapid bus transit that's going to be coming. I know that there's one coming down Hennepin, and I think that we'll see this coming to cross more of our streets. And that's really going to, I think, help pick up our use of mass transit, which, you know, obviously, moving into the future is something that we really want to encourage. I liked the things that Aisha was saying about making the bus stops, you know, more user friendly, all of those things that she said about. And I another resident had actually brought this up, and I thought, yeah, that's a great idea of being able to have a plugin. I would like to be able to see, kind of like when you travel to other countries, you can see kind of in real time where the bus is. I would, I would love for us to have something that is more robust in that way, so that that makes using mass transit also something that is more convenient and practicable.
Thank you. Katie, you're up next.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. And as a transit nerd too, I am very excited to be able to talk about this. When I think about transportation, I also think about access and I think about who has access, how affordable is that access, and how safe is it as well? So I'm a major proponent of the city's complete streets policy, which prioritizes the most vulnerable users of our street first. Bikers and walkers and rollers, followed by transit users, then followed by private vehicles. I am also a a member of the STACK, which is which is the Sustainable Transportation Advisory Committee for the for Minnesota Department of Transportation. And so I understand the the how our various transportation systems intertwine and that the city, the county, and state all have to work together as well as Met Council with the Transit Authority to give us our transportation options. As an engineer, I'm focused on outcomes, and I know that in the past 70 years that we've, we've really been focused on one type of of mode of transit, and we've been slowly changing that. But I'm excited that we have such an opportunity in this ward to really make big changes on these streets to rebalance our and really complete our streets. I've also sat on the city's Capital Long Range Improvement Committee, which is our infrastructure committee for the past five years. And that has allowed me to get get a really big understanding of how our our city streets are funded and how we can actually make changes along them. And last but not least, as a someone who's worked in climate change for the last 10 years, one of the the biggest drivers of climate change is our transportation system. And that, and I know EVs are coming and those things are great, but at the end of the day, they're not going to help us meet our 80% GHD reduction goal by 2050. We need to reduce vehicle miles traveled, and that will, we will need to do that through our complete streets policy. I think that will get us there. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Chris?
Yeah, excellent question. So I grew up on the in the Mercy Homes neighborhood. And I went to school on the south side at Anderson Open and at South High. And I also played basketball for Washburn. And so I know how important it is to be able to use mass transit. I I took the bus almost daily to practice, to work, to school. One thing citywide I would like to see is more routes that don't go through downtown. I know that that's difficult because of the river and because of 394, but we need to make it easier to get from one one end of the city to the other without going through downtown. For Ward 10, for our priorities, you know, the way I look at it right now is that we we have a good mass transit system. We have a lot of bus routes, a lot of easy access through the ward. We have great access for for bikes and and by walking on trails. We need to take a balanced approach to to our redesign of the streets. We need to include all modes of transportation and try and include them equally because we need to, we need to meet people where they are. And the number of people driving, the number of people riding bikes, the number of people walking. If you look at the the past 10 years to now, we haven't seen a lot, a lot of changes. And if we're looking out into the future 10, 20 years, we're we're probably not going to see a lot of difference in the way that people are traveling. So parking is still going to be important. We're still going to be in cars. We can meet our clean energy goals by the use of electric vehicles. You have major auto manufacturers that are saying that they're going to be phasing out combustion engines in the next 15 years. And we're going to need a place to park our vehicles because for a lot of people, vehicles are way out of poverty and and the way that they can get around and do their daily business. So that would be my transit plan.
Thank you. David, you're up next.
Thank you very much. I had to deal as a Duluth City Council member with some traffic calming issues on 21st Avenue East that heads up towards UMD in Duluth from the from the lake. And there were regularly deaths that took place there. People were killed because there was so much traffic and they were going around and they had four lanes. We moved it down to three lanes. It carried more traffic, less pollution, and there hadn't been a death for several years after that. That traffic calming thing made a huge difference. We need to do some traffic calming things. But one of the things that that in our ward particularly, we never built this city to have one person in one car. We built a city on on transit, and there were occasional automobiles. This has changed dramatically in the last 40 or 50 years. And we're in a time of transition right now, and transitions are always very uncomfortable for people. Because some people absolutely gotta have my car. It's got to be parked right out in front. I've got to do that. Well, I think 10 years from now, we're going to have a lot fewer cars because I think there's a whole generation growing up deciding not to have cars. In our family, the two of us, we have one car. That's what we have. Some people have more than one car themselves, and they're parked on the streets. It's it's complicated. We need to keep things safe for pedestrians. I had a call this morning from somebody who saw a terrible accident that took a life of somebody over on Nicollet. And and his girls went to school near there and walked across the street, and he was, he's absolutely terrified that that they they might get hit. We have to do bump outs. We have to lower speeds. We have to make people aware to drive and be more safe. We have to use pedestrians as 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 a way for people to get around on bikes, car shares, all kinds of things, transit. It's a pretty complex issue, and we need to pay attention to the neighborhoods. Thank you.
David, we're going to come right back to you for the next question. What does effective equitable public safety look like to you? And what are your short, medium, and long term goals for public safety in the city?
Would you repeat that one more time for me, Charlie?
Gladly. What does effective equitable public safety look like to you? And what are your short, medium, and long term goals for public safety in the city?
So two minutes. Okay, that's that's a good one. Right now, we we're we're down 200 police. And they, because of the events of last summer, and, you know, it's, there's a lot of stress. And so that's, that's difficult on them. It's also difficult that we don't have as many police out as as the city has in their charter and where we should be. There was always planned to have additional classes and more cadets, and that's happening, and that's, that's a good thing. I think it's very important that we use our police department to help work in neighborhoods, to organize neighborhoods for safety. And it doesn't mean everything is done just by the police, but that they can provide strategies and ideas and can help us do neighborhood watch types of things. We we again did that when I was a city council member in Duluth, and it made a huge difference. This is a very difficult time because we've come through COVID, which makes things a bit worse. We had the the awful events of last summer with the with the murder of George Floyd and 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 the things that that followed that. It's going to take a, I've got 30 seconds. All right, well, that's the right now, we've got to get through the next year or two. That's the crucial piece. And if we don't get through that, we won't be able to have long term goals. So we have to sort of stabilize the situation. We have to recruit good people to to work in the police department. We have to transform the police department and culture, not just reform, but transform. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you're up.
Yeah, so effective equitable public safety. Well, what that means to me is is providing for the ensuring the public safety, which is the number one responsibility of government. That means that we have to have the proper level of police protection. But also, we need to make sure that the police are serving the citizens and treating all citizens with with dignity that that we deserve, not violating the constitutional rights, not murdering citizens. And we also need to make sure that 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 police are accountable. So it's it's a balanced approach. It's also utilizing the Office of Violence Prevention. There are some utilizations for that office that I think are good and that I think that should be expanded on and studied further. And then it's also providing mentoring for our youth so that we can provide activities and also a job training for youth and to have a pipeline to work for for young people. Short term goals, we have a cadet class. We need to be having conversations right now on on the type of police officers that we want serving serving the city. We need to implement training so that they are properly trained. And we, you know, our department is down almost a third. Where that that's that's unprecedented for this department. We have a real chance to change the the culture of the police department, and we need to be having these conversations now on what kind of police officers we want serving the city. We need to get our hiring up, that being a medium goal. We need to get our hiring up so that we can have enough staffing to properly serve the citizens. And then long term goals, we need to rebuild the trust and get police out of their cars, engaging citizens, engaging businesses, and engaging the the communities on the streets that they that they serve.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Katie, you're up next.
Yes, so I first want to acknowledge that our public safety system hasn't been working. It's provided disproportionate outcomes, particularly for our our BIPOC residents. And so because of that, it cannot continue in its current form. I, as a as an engineer, I think of tools and I think of our toolbox. And currently, you know, we've effectively had just one tool for public safety, and we really need to expand that toolbox. And so in the short term, I think about what what tools can we add to that and really expand them? So it's investing in pilots around group violence intervention. It's in investing in mental health and substance abuse resources and supports for those who need it. It's investing in housing and making sure that that if someone is unhoused, that having the right responders to provide the supports that they need. And I also think about in the short term, we need to think about our structure of the public of our public safety system. We currently have a police department, but is our outcome really policing or is it public safety? And so I am in favor of of the people's petition for a charter amendment that would change our public safety system to a have to have a public safety department. And policing or law enforcement arm would be just one component, and hopefully a small one of that. In the medium term, I would invest resources in those in those pilots that I was talking about and then bringing them to scale. And in especially, you know, thinking about those those group violence intervention, those those violence prevention strategies that we can employ. And long term, it's really about providing support to residents, making sure they have economic opportunity, housing stability. And that's what's going to bring us the public safety that we need is investing in people. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia, you're up next.
Yeah, so my vision of public safety is what I'm calling restorative justice. Because I really think that something like restorative justice is encompassing the entire nexus of public safety, which includes policing. So I think in the short term, we need to support Chief Rondo and Inspector Amelia Huffman, who is now in charge of recruitment and wants to recruit people with a background in social work and education and a much more expanded set of skills for living and in working and serving in our communities. I would also, I'm calling for a precinct by precinct truth and reconciliation process. Because we, this is a moment where we need to stop and listen to the hundreds of years of racialized trauma that is at the base of so much of what is happening right now. And you can, you know, move the pieces around and shuffle who's going to be in charge of Chief Rondo and who is not. But if you do not take this moment to stop and listen from community to community, not speak on behalf of, but let them speak for themselves, we are just going to keep carrying this with us into whatever system we want to design into the future. So that, those are both my short term goals. The medium term goals would be to build up the social safety network that has been defunded. The truth is that policing in Minneapolis has not just been one tool. We have had many different tools. But over the years, these have been systematically defunded. And so we need to take this moment to say, no, actually, this is not our vision for how we want to do community based policing. And the long term is that once we see the effects of building back in the social safety networks, having stable housing, having good transportation, having, you know, education, equitable education, then I think we are able to use a 211, 311, 411, 911 system to, you know, right size our public safety.
Thank you very much. Stephen, you're up next.
Thank you. I think a more equitable public safety system is one that is based in community and neighborhoods that focuses on de-escalation. I think short term, we should start withholding police accountable with a civilian police accountability council. And this is a civilian elected council that gives the community the opportunity and authority to make sure that law enforcement officers are held accountable. Medium term, I say we Medium term, I say we should take away the military-grade weaponry they have. You know, there's no reason for armored vehicles or chemical weapons and stuff like that. And I think we should start working towards react reallocating their budget towards other public services like social workers. And I really don't think that all public safety should be up to the police like it currently is. Long term, I do think we should recreate the system of public safety in the city, but we won't be replacing it without proper systems, you know, in place. I mean, in in the past, you know, five to 10 years, we've tried increasing the police budget to give law enforcement officers de-escalation training and body cameras nationwide. And what we've seen is the continued murder of black, brown, and indigenous people. We've seen selected usage of the body cams or delayed releasing of footage. So I think the police just have too much on their shoulders and we should try giving up that responsibility. I think we need a new system that focuses on protecting the citizens of the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you very much. Aisha.
Yeah. Right now, we're asking our police to do too much. We ask them to be social workers and crisis counselors and everything in between. And right now, our law enforcement and criminal justice system inflict disproportionate harm on our BIPOC and LGBTQ community. And we cannot achieve safety for all under a system that perpetuates injustice. I believe we can live in a community where we achieve public safety without the police. I know we're not going to get there overnight. We need to be thoughtful, recognize and address people's concerns, do our research, and go about achieving this vision in a way that is both compassionate and evidence-based. In the short term, I support the ongoing community-led petition to change our charter and replace the Minneapolis Police Department with a new Department of Public Safety. This is the first step to approaching public safety from a holistic, public health-centered perspective. In the medium term, I'd like to see us create a comprehensive strategy for 911 dispatch to ensure appropriate frontline responders show up when people need help. When someone in the community is having a mental health crisis, someone showing up with a gun is not going to help. I want to see us build democratized and police-free systems of public safety like we started building in our neighborhoods this summer. And in the long term, we have to invest in social services and city programs that address the root causes of crime, like making sure everyone has a safe and affordable place to live, an easy and accessible way to get to and from work, and is treated with dignity and respect in their workplace.
Thank you very much. We will move on to the next question. How will you support our small business community struggling as a result of the pandemic and civil unrest? Aisha, take it away.
Yes. Our dollars should remain in our communities. Too much of the wealth of our community ends up in the pockets of major corporations and the 1%. We can combat wealth inequality and support our small businesses by encouraging investments in our own community and supporting the many small businesses here. Need to make sure that as as we continue to move through this public health and financial crisis to support small businesses and the workers who make them run. Especially as we rebuild Lake Street, we need to support and invest in the small, black, brown, indigenous, and immigrant-owned businesses that give Ward 10 its unique feel and provide access to wealth. We can combat the predatory redlining practices of large financial institutions by focusing on local banking options and supporting commercial land trusts. We need to expand the Office of the Small Business Navigator to make it easier and more affordable to start and maintain a small business. We need to ensure black, brown, and indigenous and immigrant-owned businesses receive municipal grants and recovery funds to take over empty storefronts. And finally, I support providing more assistance for groups of workers looking to start co-ops and supporting ongoing cooperative projects. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Stephen, you're up next.
Yes, so I do think small businesses are important and a good way to keep the money in the communities. You know, these major corporations don't, although they do provide great services and jobs to the people, it's a lot of the time the money is going to the board of directors or the investors over in Wall Street. So I think if we gave, you know, grants and tax abatement to cooperatives and small businesses under, you know, a certain amount of employees, that would be a great start. But also providing those options for people who want to start new businesses. I mean, we saw the closing of a lot of doors of local small businesses that just couldn't sustain their rent or paying their employees and they had to furlough people. So I think, you know, for helping people get back on their feet and to help new businesses come up, you know, I think that's a good way to get get started, you know, that the city level can provide. Thanks.
Thank you. Alicia, you're up next.
So as a as someone who has owned my own small business and started a small business association, clearly, this is something that I put a lot of thought into. And I've just been spending a lot of time talking to small businesses. I've already mentioned, one of the things I think we have to do is make sure that we are putting the small businesses at the table and that some of our larger city planning decision-making. So making sure that they're there and the things that we were doing are not unintentionally making it even harder for small businesses to recover. I also, the Small Business Navigator Department not only needs to be expanded, but we really need to be thinking about the way that we are having businesses approach starting a business here. So right now, it's a very but small business has to go a lot of different departments within the city. So we need to reorganize this. So there's a one-stop shop, so to speak, for a small business to get the resources, to start and to get the resources that they need. I also think that for Ward 10, one of the things that a city council member can do is help bring together the artistic creative class of this ward with our small businesses to really revitalize our spaces, especially as we are emerging from pandemic and we are remember and remembering how wonderful and joyful it is to be back together in community with each other. I think that we can do this more cohesively by bringing all of the people to, you know, I would love to have quarterly conversations. Right now, we have special business districts that are meet separately than the small business associations, the neighborhood associations. I don't want to bring all of these people to the table so we can come up with a very ward-specific plan that brings everybody together.
Thank you. Katie, you're up next.
Hi, yes, I when I think about this question, I think about the number of conversations that I've had with small business owners over the last couple of months. And the the number that basically the three main things that they keep coming that keep coming up in those conversations are safety, access, and and access to credit. So when it comes to safety, you know, I think one of the things that that, you know, especially coming out of this pandemic, everyone's been cooked up is so much inside that, you know, having more eyes on the street, having better walkability, increased walkability to our businesses will help keep keep crime down and our businesses safe. And two, making sure that there is just access to businesses. I know that there's a lot of different ways that we can access businesses. And right now, there there's been it's easier to access them in in easy more easily in some ways than others. And so we need to streamline and basically rebalance how we're able to access them. So right now, a lot of people get around by by car. And so we need to make it easier to get around by bus and and biking and walking to access those businesses. And third, access to credit. I in speaking with a number of business owners, there is actually a small business office that already exists and within the city of Minneapolis. So there is a one-stop shop. But the financial resources that are available are tricky to access because of because they have to go through banks, which have credit processes that can make it difficult, particularly for our BIPOC community members. And so I think it's time for the city to reevaluate its financial resources, including the 2% loan program, because those are not addressing the needs that we have in particular here in the city. And the other thing that I've heard from small businesses is that they don't have that. They don't feel like they have a voice at the city. And I've served on a number of boards and commissions within the city, and it's time to create a small business board and commission.
Chris, you're up next.
Yeah, so the vibrancy of the businesses is is an important component to Ward 10. Traditionally, outside of downtown, Ward 10 is the most vibrant area for businesses. And the businesses, even before the pandemic, have been crying out because of policies that the city has been pursuing that have been hurting their businesses. They're 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 crying out for access. They're crying out for safety. They also want to make sure that as we are rebuilding after this pandemic, that we are opening financing to diverse communities so that we can continue to have the diverse businesses that are the character of the neighborhood. We also do need to have, we need to put more resources into the the navigator concept that has been that Alicia brought up. You know, we need to break down the barriers that that keep people from investing in the community. And we also need to make sure that people are safe when they are visiting our businesses. We are we're a regional hub. And we're we're the economic center for this region. A lot of people come from outside of the ward and patronize our businesses. So we need to make sure that people feel safe in coming here. And that's just beyond law enforcement. But that's also having more people on the street, such as like an ambassador program where people are easily identified and they can direct people to different businesses. They can maybe offer suggestions of restaurants to go to and just, you know, be be kind of ambassadors for the city or for the ward. And also, we need to make sure that we're building up our small businesses so that we can give people jobs, good-paying jobs, so that they can support their families.
Thank you. Thank you. David, you're up.
We are very fortunate in Ward 10 to have some wonderful businesses. I I buy my glasses at Ideals in Uptown. There it's an absolutely wonderful place. One of the most amazing places in in the entire metro area is also on Lyndale Avenue. It's called Top Shelf. They make custom clothing. Now, that's out of the price range of all of us. I'm sure there might be somebody who could do it. But that's an incredible place and it it it's been there for many years. And and it is a small business that has contributed greatly to Uptown. I I shop at The Wedge. As I told you, I've been a member there 24 years, something like that. I shop at the the Lunds in Byer Lees. I go by Campaign Banks at Sunrise Bank, which is which is in the ward, and it's a socially conscious bank that that makes a huge difference. Minuteman Press has printed stuff up for me. It's also in our ward. I use the businesses, the small businesses in our ward, and I hope all of you do too, because these are people that have invested their lives, invested themselves. They contribute tax money so that we can we can continue to do good things in our city. We need to support them. The arts community, I want to say thank you to Alicia for bringing that up because the Jungle Theater and all of these artists, so many artists are now in real deep trouble because they have not had any regular stream of income. That needs to be part of what we're doing in our in our ward. We're we're just really fortunate to live here and to have opportunities and shop here and invite other people to come here. Small businesses are the backbone of of our ward and the backbone of our city, and we have to help rebuild the small businesses along Lake Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. And we are going to come right back to you for the final question. How do you plan to involve constituents, especially those who have been historically underrepresented in the decision-making process in our ward and in our city?
I'm really glad you say in our ward and in our city. Because even though we are elected to represent a ward, we really are city council members for the entire city, and we have to make decisions for the entire city. So that means what happens on the north side and what's happening there has impact on us too. So the way to do that basically is to do outreach and and you do a lot of listening. One of the skills I developed doing working in nonprofits and working in faith communities and that sort of thing is to be a really careful and good listener. So we have to go out and have some of these listening sessions. And city council people need to answer their telephone. They need to respond to texts. They need to respond to emails. And if they don't do that, they are not doing their job as a city council person. But I think going out to where people are and in the community and listening carefully, asking questions, learning, growing, and helping to pull people together so that people get represented across the city. Everybody needs to have to be part of the solution. And and I think we can do that if we really do a good job of listening and caring and reaching out. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you're up next.
So I grew up in a mixed-race home, and my father's black, my mother's white. And so people being marginalized is is of great concern to me. And, you know, the job of the city council of a city council person is to be an advocate. And it is to go out and to meet people where they are. We have 13 wards in this city. I'm I'm an avid runner. I I plan on representing every corner of the ward and being in every single corner of the ward in representing the values of Ward 10 members on the city council. In the in the firehouse, we have what's called the kitchen table. Now, we don't sit around it the same ways as we used to pre-pandemic. And if we do, we're socially spaced and we have masks on. But it was around that kitchen table that I first kind of got my start, listening to the issues of firefighters, listening to their concerns about staffing, listening to the hopes and dreams for their families, for their kids' education, and and how they were having to take second jobs to make ends meet. And I was able to advocate for those values simply by by listening. And that's what made me an effective advocate for my brothers and sisters in the fire service. So that it there's no special sauce or secret sauce to it. You have to be open. You have to be open-minded. You have to be open to different ideas. You you can't be an activist pushing one agenda. It's not your job to to tell people what to believe. It's it's your job to represent the values, and that's how I represent the values of Ward 10.
Thank you. Katie, you're up next.
So I've been making lots and lots of calls recently with people in the ward as well as around the city to understand what are the things that are that people like about our city? And also, what are the concerns that they have? And I think that's that's the the way that a council member needs needs to to operate, to understand what's happening throughout the city because although the person will represent the ward, the person is making decisions for the entire city. And to our ward, I vow to be responsive. I have no ambitions to be council president because I want to have the time and the opportunity to serve our residents and to answer their calls. You know, a council member needs to take care of the basics to be able to, you know, fix that pothole or fix that sidewalk or fix that, you know, the if the garbage has not been picked up. So I want to be the person that can connect our our ward constituents to city services. I also vow to show up to to neighborhood events as well as to community events. I I'm a participator by nature to my husband's chagrin. He hates that I'm always busy and trying to be involved in things, and I think that that is an asset to a council member. I also know, having served on boards and commissions at the city, that that is an excellent way for for constituent constituent voices to be heard at the city on specific topics. From the Council on Aging to the pedestrian advisory committee, there are a number of ways for citizens to plug in, and I aim to really make sure that those positions are filled and that they're filled with diverse voices. And and last but not least, learning about the issues. So I, as I mentioned, I've been making tons of calls and been trying to really learn around the about the issues that people care about throughout the city, whether it's the HERC in environmental justice or the Roof Depot site that also has an environmental justice issue. I vow to to really dig in and to listen to what are the current concerns of people in the city.
Thank you very much. Alicia, take it away.
Yeah, Charlie, could you repeat the question one more time?
Absolutely. One moment. How do you plan to involve constituents, especially those who have been historically underrepresented in the decision-making process in our ward and in our city?
Great, thank you. I wanted to make sure that I that I understood it. So equitable representation is what I hear this question about. And I think that that is really at the heart of this moment. So many of our problems can be traced back to the fact that we have had unequitable representation. So let's look at some of the things that I have been doing as a president of the Neighborhood Association to address this issue and to create cross decision-making for a community. So we, right after the So we, uh, right after the pandemic hit, we, our neighbors created a mutual aid network. And I made sure that we brought that into the Neighborhood Association and made it the mission, part of the mission of what we do, so that it can be sustainable. And we have seen that because we were able to do that, we could grow that. I, when the public safety, um, issue really started, uh, becoming a big topic, I said, hey, wait a second, we need to hear from people who we do not traditionally hear from. So I organized and, uh, was the moderator for a boots-on-the-ground public safety forum where we got to hear from community leaders from North Minneapolis who got to tell us about the work that they have been doing. Uh, this resulted in a mentorship grant program that I have been a part of. Uh, neighborhood, I led some neighborhood protests around pub, uh, public or affordable housing that we were losing after hearing from people who had been let, kicked out of their housing. Their current council member did not show up, but I did after the fact and tried to help organize them so that they could, uh, get the resources that they deserved. I brought restorative justice training to our Neighborhood Association so that we could move forward hopefully as an entire board and as an organization, thinking about equitable representation. Um, and the process, I want to see us strengthen our community institutions and actually begin to fund at higher levels the community organizations across the city who would have amazing ideas and are, have been working creatively and tenaciously on some of these big issues.
Thank you so much. Uh, Stephen, you're up next.
Yeah. So in this representative democracy, we as city councilors should just be a vessel for the majority of the constituents in our ward, but also throughout the city. I think having an open door is important, but also hosting events virtually and in-person post-COVID for, um, people's concerns that they can voice and specific town halls for topics like public safety, um, traffic changes and concerns, minimum wage and renters protections and so on. To me, it's, it's pretty simple. You just show up and you represent your constituents and respond to them. We're supposed to just be here for the people.
Thank you so much. Uh, Aisha, you're up next.
Awesome. Ward 10 deserves a council member who's committed to being accessible, accountable, and building relationships with all our communities. When it comes to specifically serving marginalized people and making their voices heard, my office will always strive to maintain a culture of access while meeting community members where they're at. We shouldn't have to make it to city hall to meet with our elected leaders. I commit to having regular town halls, consistently attending community meetings and events, and being available at locations throughout Ward 10 for drop-in office hours regularly. I want to embody a form of leadership through which community members know that I will advocate for our shared values and I will fully engage honestly with criticism and disagreement. I commit to always being willing to listen and communicate, no matter how hard a conversation might be, and standing by the needs of our community regardless of political pressure, expediency, and what's deemed passable or palatable. Change is about more than what happens at city hall. Change is based in community and I will always maintain my relationships with people and movements. I commit to actively seeking the input and cultivating relationships with those most impacted to inform policy and decision-making. And finally, meeting regularly with representatives of community and neighborhood organizations, issue and movement groups, labor unions and worker centers and business associations to ensure that local concerns are addressed.
Thank you so much. Uh, that ends our question-answer session. We are going to move into closing statements. And for that, uh, Aisha, I'm going to come right back to you.
The stakes are incredibly high today for renters, for people living in poverty, for black, brown, and indigenous people, and they're only getting higher. We need a leader who will fight for policies that leave no one behind because they understand what it's like to be left behind. I will be a champion for policies like fair scheduling that protect working-class people. I will be a bold voice for investing in evidence-based, public health-centered alternatives to policing that make sure everyone feels safe in their communities. I will fight for housing policies like rent control and strengthening eviction protection, tenant protections, um, to keep people in their homes and in the communities they love. I've seen over and over again the ways in which the people of our community come together to support one another in times of hardship and struggle. I see it as a core responsibility of the Ward 10 council member to bring people together in that spirit, to facilitate neighbors sharing resources and learning from one another. I believe the people of Ward 10 want to build a city where everyone has what they need to thrive. A Minneapolis that honors people's dignity and demonstrates that a different and better world is possible. I will be a champion for the people in Ward 10 and across our city who are often forgotten. I will help build connections between our neighbors with big hearts and our neighbors who need someone to show up and fight alongside them. That's what my campaign is all about and I hope to earn your support. Thank you so much for having me with you all today. I look forward to getting to know you better and continuing to show up with you.
Thank you. Stephen, you're up next.
So I actually didn't really prepare any closing statements. So, um, I just wanted to thank y'all for allowing us here to speak, um, Lena for hosting us and just, um, let you all know, you know, I'm running a campaign that's, um, targeting specific policies so that, you know, I could be held accountable for following through. I, I think we have a, a really great city, a really wonderful ward, and I'd love to represent you. And we need to continue working though to make this city and this ward more egalitarian. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Alicia, you're up next.
So I was trained to understand that peace is more than the absence of violence. Peace is the presence of justice. It is the presence of equality and it is the presence of cooperation. Translating that into the grassroots level, you know, in pragmatic ways, means that we must do what we can to empower community. A lot of people are going to talk about community and a lot, and power, uh, but we really need to ask, what does that mean? So I previously just mentioned, uh, several of the things that I've been doing, uh, because that's what I've really been dedicating myself to for the past couple of years of empowering community through strengthening community decision-making. And as a council member, I want to continue doing that and also make sure that community organizations like small business associations, like neighborhood associations, um, different issue, um, associations are properly funded. I also want to make sure that we have engagement processes that are more than surveys, that are more than listening sessions where we show up to hear what decisions have been made and then perhaps get to ask questions. And that means that I want to do the work of a council member in answering phone calls, responding to emails, and connecting residents and businesses to resources, information, and to each other. Starting this Saturday, I'm going to host a series of community conversations with guest participants from the ward, but also from around the city. And I invite you to join the conversations by registering at the events tab at my website, votealicia gibson dot org, or excuse me, dot com, uh, where you can also learn more about my campaign. You can also, um, at that website, join this community-centered movement for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Katie, you're up next.
I again want to thank Lena for hosting this event tonight and thank my fellow candidates for being here. What I really value about this group is that we all want what is best for the community and share similar values for racial justice, equity, and sustainability. I want to note that the next council member in this seat will have just a two-year term rather than a typical four. Two years is short, not a lot of time to learn the ropes of city hall, understand the dynamics of the various departments the council oversees, or learn what it takes to develop and adopt a policy. I have deep experience at the local level and I'm ready to hit the ground running. I worked in city hall for five years in the sustainability office on energy programs and policies. During that time, I worked across departments with various council members and drafted ordinance language. I played a key role in development of the residential energy disclosure policies. These, these give valuable energy information so that when you go to buy or rent a home, you have an understanding of the efficiency and likely utility costs for that space. Housing costs involve more than just rent. Providing energy transparency helps residents make better decisions when finding a home. The person in this council seat also needs to have a good understanding of the community he, she, or they are representing and prioritize those voices that have been historically been left out. As part of the park planning advisory committee, I pushed to right a historical wrong in the park design. And as part, president of the Lowry Hill East Neighborhood Association Board, I spearheaded efforts to make the association more inclusive as, of renters, like I was when I first came here, by hosting renters happy hours and welcome pickups. During my time, we increased renter representation from two to more than half of the board. We have a number of urgent issues in our city: public safety, housing, racial justice, climate. With my city experience, I understand the, the details, the systems and the barriers, and I'm ready to tackle our tough challenges. I'm ready to work with you for a more just, connected, and sustainable Minneapolis. I appreciate your attention tonight and for the opportunity to earn your support. Please reach out if you would like to have a deeper discussion and you can do so by emailing Katie, K-A-T-I-E, at katieforward10.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Chris, you're up next.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Lena, for hosting and, uh, thank you, Ward 10 neighbors for, uh, coming and, and also thank you to my fellow candidates. And, uh, yeah, I, I, I second that, Katie. I believe that we all, uh, want what's best for the city. And, uh, we, we all, uh, have what's best for the city at heart and, and I'm honored to share the stage with you folks today. The, the job of the city council is about service and, uh, I've been serving, uh, my, the, my community that I served in St. Paul for 20 years. I've also been serving the, the firefighters of the state of Minnesota and, and, and of my fire department for 15 years as their advocate. Um, I've worked on a number of different issues and have been successful in, in those issues, dealing with, uh, uh, mental health uh, as well as their, their, their physical health, um, passing, uh, legislation at the, at the state level, uh, testifying on bills and, uh, working with all stakeholders in, in a tough environment. Uh, the, the, the state Capitol is known for inertia. And, um, I've found ways to break through that inertia to pass, twice pass bills to ban toxic flame retardants and, uh, uh, upholstered furniture and children's products. Um, to also, uh, create a, uh, presumption for, uh, uh, workers around COVID to enhance, uh, their, their workers' compensation benefits should they, uh, become infected. That, that presumption, um, it increased, uh, the, the, uh, health benefits and protections for a number of different workers. Tens of thousands of workers, um, from first responders to healthcare workers. I want to bring that to the, uh, to, to city hall. I want you to judge me not on what I say I'm going to do. Uh, not only on what I, what I say I'm going to do, but also what I have done. And we have issues. We have, uh, policies that are, that are making, um, uh, housing unaffordable. Uh, we're, we, we need to, uh, uh, properly protect the city, but also increase accountability of the police department and, and, and their treatment of people. Uh, we have a lot of issues. Please mark me number one, uh, your first choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. David, uh, you are up next.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you to Lena for doing this. We've had, uh, about 175 people who've been on this, which is absolutely fantastic. I want to thank all six candidates. Well, I guess five and, and me, but all six candidates. You are bright, you are smart, you care about the city, you're putting yourself on the line, and that's what's really important. And thank you for doing that. It, it's a pleasure to get to know each of you better as, as we go through this process. I don't need any on-the-job training. I have been a city council member before. I've served Duluth, uh, as a city council member. I chaired the finance committee, which is a huge committee in any city and we're facing huge financial things. I ran for mayor of the city of Duluth. Thankfully, I didn't win. It would have, would have, would have been too much. Uh, I've been elected three times citywide down here in Minneapolis on the Board of Estimative Taxation. I have experience. I know the, the people in city hall, but what I know is the council has not worked well at all. It has been quite dysfunctional this past year and we have to elect somebody who knows how to work with people who disagree with them, who can sit down and work things out. And our priorities have to very clearly be, uh, uh, taking care of the economy and that means investing in a lot of the poorer neighborhoods and job opportunities for lots of people. Uh, we have to take care of public safety. We have to transform our, our police department. But even more than that, we have to build a really strong, healthy council. My, my first priority would be to sit down and spend significant time with each single council member and get to know them well so that we can work together and put things together to save the city of Minneapolis. We are in a critical time. We have to work together. We have to work together. We have to save Minneapolis. And I'm offering myself as somebody who has the background, the experience and, and can do it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, David, and thanks to all of our candidates for, um, uh, for, for really, um, giving us a, an introduction to, um, what is going to be a really interesting election season. Thanks for bearing with us for, uh, for, uh, during this, uh, pandemic. The, I know I speak for myself and a lot of others that I'm, we're all sick of Zoom and are looking forward to a time when we can be, uh, together in person, uh, in, in doing this, uh, uh, as neighbors, uh, sooner rather than later, hopefully. So thank you all for being with us. A couple of quick notes that I wanted to, to mention about, uh, about Lena. Um, some of our neighbors, Charlie, Molly, and, uh, some others are organizing a clothing drive on, uh, March 6th, uh, at Arc Stone on, uh, 20th, uh, 28th and Lindale. Uh, we'll be posting some information about the chap, but if you have new or gently-used clothing that, uh, can be donated to, uh, neighbors in need, please, um, please, uh, do so. I'd also mentioned the, um, the Brothers Empowered fundraiser that was mentioned earlier. Um, we have, uh, we're partnering with this great, uh, nonprofit on, on the north side that's, uh, helping it engage and do some wonderful things for, for youth. So, um, if you can, please, uh, take a look and, 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 and help out Brothers Empowered. Finally, I would, uh, put in a plug for, um, uh, a wedge is the Wedge Neighborhood, the Lena Food Share. We've been doing a wonderful, um, food share for this past year. We raised over $10,000. That's going to allow us to, uh, continue this food share throughout 2021. Uh, if you can, again, please, uh, go to, uh, www.the wedge.org to continue to support this fabulous effort that's, uh, helping out so many people who, uh, who, who needed this. This would's been a pretty brutal year. Um, and then finally, I just, uh, make a pitch for the, uh, the Wedge, the Lena Neighborhood, um, meeting, our, our, our all neighborhood get-together is going to be April 21st, uh, on this beloved Zoom platform unfortunately, but we look forward to seeing, uh, all of our Lena residents and, and neighbors there. We're also looking for board members. So if you live in the wedge and you are looking to get involved, we welcome, uh, new and diverse voices to join us and uh, help plan the next, uh, the, the next candidate forum. So if you have suggestions or, um, want us to, to think about, uh, different formats or different, uh, topics to cover with these candidates, we're all ears. Um, send an email to info@the wedge.org. And, um, we'd, uh, we welcome your feedback. So with that, a big, uh, thank you to our candidates and to you, our neighbors, for, uh, making the time to, to join us this evening. Thanks much. Stay healthy, be well, and, um, we'll see you next time.